Good evening. The August 6th meeting of the Longview City Council is now called to order. Tonight's meeting is being conducted via teleconference. As in the past, it will have a roll call to confirm all members of the council are present and participating in our considerations. So councilmembers, can I call your, I'm just going to call your districts tonight, council? It makes it easier to, and we'll just respond with an affirmative if you're present. District one?
Here.
District two?
Here.
District three?
Here.
District four?
Here.
District five?
Here.
District six?
Here.
Wonderful. Thank you all for being here tonight. Now, city staff, I'll have y'all's roll call. City manager, Keith Bonds?
Here.
City attorney, Jim Finley?
Present.
City secretary, Angie Shepherd?
Here.
Perfect. Thank you all once again for being here. Thanks to all of those who are joining us for this teleconference meeting. We're now reached citizen comment portion of our meeting. Those who wish to participate in the citizen comment tonight are invited to access this meeting through the link to register with teleconference application. As Sean here, the city's media and tourism manager will moderate the citizen comment portion of our meeting. When you're called on to speak, your mic will be unmuted and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Please start by stating your name and address for public record. Sean, do we have any residents who want to speak tonight?
We do not have anyone logged on to speak tonight.
Thank you so much, sir. We will now move to budget item A. Discuss the proposal of 2021 budget for the city of Longview. This is only presented by city manager Keith Bonds. Mr. Bonds?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'd like to start with a budget assumptions that we talked about at the last meeting. So this is how we, the things that we used to develop the budget, starting several months ago. But as we're all aware, the economy has been negatively impacted by COVID-19, and we are anticipating a multi-year budget impact due to the sales tax revenues being down significantly. We did receive our certified values for property evaluations, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But they were originally estimated to be up by about a half a percent. We anticipated no change in the tax rate, as well as revenue losses in our other fees and fines that we collect. We have, however, been assisted by the CARES Act fund and anticipate receiving around $4.5 million. We have reduced expenditures across the board, and we feel like we may be able to use some available fund balance during this recovery. And we are delaying our needed rate increases for water, sewer, and sanitation. So this is the certified values. So the original estimate was a little over $6.1 billion. Or there's the .45% increase. However, the certified values came in a little bit over $6.2 billion, or a 2.2% increase, which provides an additional $544,619 in general fund revenue. So how we're going to use that, we'll talk about it in just a second. So another piece of good news is the bond refunding savings. So the last council meeting on July 6th, council approved a bond refunding, and we have done so. And the savings were about $2.09 million total over the life of the bond. However, due to some front-loaded savings schedule, we are increasing savings the first two years. And you can see that in the chart. It's a 13 years left on the bond. But additional savings this year, from what we had planned, is $319,850. So adding those two values together, certified values, 544, the bond refunding schedule of bond refunding savings of $319,850 brings us a total new revenue that we weren't anticipating of $864,469. So what this does to us is, shown in the lower right-hand corner here, we're able to reduce the debt rate from 1747 to 1592, while the M&amp;O rate we're able to increase from 3842 to 3997, and still keep the overall property tax rate at 5589. So total property tax rates, we'll talk about the, what was formerly referred to as the effective rate and the rollback rate. So the total property tax rate being 55.89 cents per $100 valuation. So to compare that to the no new revenue rate, which is formerly known as the effective rate, which is the tax rate that would produce last year's revenue if applied to the same properties at this year's value, that is 55.167 cents per $100. So that makes sense now that we know that the evaluations went up. So that you would see that the no new revenue rate would be lower. However, the voter-approved rate, the voter approval rate, what's known as the rollback rate, is the maximum rate allowed by law without voter approval. It's 57.538 cents per $100. So 5589 being less than 57.538, we're in good shape there. So in summary for the general fund, so the first column being what we budgeted for last year. We felt like we would end September 30, 2020 with $11.894 million in reserve fund. However, the year-end estimate for this year, just a few months out, $12.669. Now, this is due to, you see the drop in revenue from 71140 to 67498, but we reflected a similar drop in expenditures. So leads us to what we're budgeting for this year. You see the revenues are just slightly less than the expenditures now that we've found those new revenues. So just a $3,470 of reserve fund being needed. So we're going to end up next year with a 17.53% reserve fund, which is $5,440,129 above the council-approved or required 10%. So real proud of those numbers. I think we're going to be able to live with that. So this is a chart that we've been showing for many years, and you can see the red being the 10% minimum, the blue being that percent of the reserve fund above the 10%, and the green being the allocated year by year. So this year, the green is just shading the top of the blue. It's just $3,470. So I would like to see if we could get some conversation and some ideas following. If council is interested in using any of the reserve fund for some unfunded budget requests. I think we talked about the last council meeting, some of the items that we removed from the budget that were requested by the departments, first being a ladder truck for the fire department valued at $1.302 million. We have determined that we could get a five-year loan. That would be a first-year payment of only $280,000. And the Parks Department had a couple of cuts, first being the Guthrie Creek Trail parking lot, which is valued $300,000, and other playground equipment replacement around town for $300,000. So both of those have been removed, as well as we have removed $1.4 million of street repaving, seal coating overlay, and those types of things. So $1.4 million less in the street department than what was requested. So just to see if council had an appetite for any of those items.
Mr. Bonds, we thank you for your presentation. Is that your end presentation, Mr. Bonds?
Well, I've got the fee request next, but.
Would anyone like to talk about these unfunded projects?
Yes, Mayor, I would. Ed Moore?
Yes, service to more.
We purposely structured this refunding to maximize our savings in fiscal '21 and fiscal '22, which goes a long way toward the $864,000 in additional revenue. I'd like for us to consider putting back some of these unfunded items. I'd like to add back first the lease purchase payment on a ladder truck. And they're not on the list, but if we cut any even minor police department equipment items from the budget, I'd like to consider putting those back also. And then the balance, I'd like to restore some of the street maintenance seal coat job. We just can't afford to fall further behind with these services. We're already a year behind on street maintenance with this year's cuts. And also, if we don't keep up with public safety needs, our department, for example, will probably need two trucks in fiscal '22. So I think it's prudent that we take advantage of this additional revenue and we restore some of the cuts. We obviously can't restore all of them, but I think we can live within our budget by restoring some of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else like to discuss this?
Yeah. I had a call this afternoon, basically had an email this afternoon. I didn't realize that we were cutting the budget of the arboretum a 43%. Our annual fee for them is around $140,000, and it's been cut down according to, according to them, it's been cut down to around 80, which amounts to about a 43% cut. Now, Scott Karen had talked to that board and said he was basically doing a cross-the-board cut of about 17% to 18%. And these folks said they could probably live with that, which would put them in around the 120, 115, 112, 115 range if they did that. And I would like to look and consider putting them back up there because what's good for one should be good for all. And if we're cutting the parks that much, I'm not understanding why they're taking a bigger hit than the rest of it is, according to those folks. Now, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Keith, because I just got this at 3 o'clock this afternoon. And I hadn't had a chance to talk to Scott, because I just got in a little bit from work. So I wanted to kind of look at that a little bit closer and see what the difference was there and why it was such a big discrepancy.
Very well. I'm sure Mr. Karen and Mr. Bonds will be able to give us information on that.
Yes, I can give you a little bit right now, if that's all right, Mayor. I'm not sure where you get the $140,000. Last year, our participation with the parks, with arboretum, we had two contracts, one for bed maintenance and one for mowing. And added together, those contracts were about $80,000. The other expenses that may have added to the 140 were normal parks maintenance fees, our budget. So we go out every day with our Parks Department employees and clean the bathrooms and blow off the sidewalks or the trail, and do other maintenance on the sprinkler systems and those type of things. So added together, I think that's the 140. I think he's got some of the numbers maybe combined differently. So we felt like we were providing them the same amount of $80,000. And they weren't 100% pleased with the contractor's performance. So we felt like we would just give them the $80,000. They could hire their own contractor or do it themselves, the bed maintenance and the mowing. So maybe we should get together with them on how to calculate that, but that's what we felt like we were doing.
I really think we need to sit down and go through that with them again and get an understanding on their side and our side of it. Because this, like I say, I just received this about 3 o'clock this afternoon, and it's still on my phone. It's on an email here that was sent to me. So that was why I was requesting it, and I think requesting an answer or some explanation for it. And I think that we sat down with them, we'd understand what our obligations are and what their obligations are. And I think it would, you know, be a little more on even.
Okay, I'm sure we can make that happen and come to some agreement on what is and isn't according to the budgets. And, you know, they may have gotten a pretty good deal if they didn't get cut. Their 11% or 70% of it was got cut, so it may be a pretty good thing for them. But we got to make sure that we know what the numbers are before we can make any kind of educated decisions on that. So I appreciate it if you all would get together and get back with us on that, Mr. Karen and Mr. Bonds. And Mr. Pertle certainly will be involved in that as well.
I certainly will.
Any other?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, this is David Wright. My only concern is that next year, we're not going to get the CARES money again. And we're concerned about where the budget's going to be. It could be worse next year than it is this year. And we're already, you know, we're getting an extra $3 million, I guess, from the CARES Act to use in this budget. So I'm concerned that if we spend the extra money, this found money that we have now, we're really going to hit the, our, the extra money, we're really going to have to hit it hard next year. And I don't know if we wouldn't be better off just saving it and spending it next year.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Anyone else having a thought on this subject? And if you don't mind, I would, I'll voice an opinion. I agree with what Mr. Moore said, but I'll agree with what Mr. Wright said. You know, it's a, this is a tightrope act, what we're walking right now, and it's very difficult. We can't predict the future. We don't know what this continued economic downturn is going to do and when it's going to end. Hopefully soon. We would love to see our sales tax revenues coming back up. I'm thrilled that we have the certified value and the bond refunding that is helping us with this year's budget, along with the CARES Act. And as Mr. Wright said, those are things that may or may not be present next year. We don't know, we don't know what CARES Act will be like next year, if it even exists next year. And we certainly don't know what the certified values will be. So I do think we need to be very cautious. I think it would be good to look at, look at the things that the staff has brought to us. But I think we need to be very cautious in how we spend the money, because I am also concerned that next year, we will have to dip into the reserve fund for maintenance items, not for things that, you know, that are, I don't want to call this a wish list. It's not a wish list. It's a, these are needed items in our city. But we were willing to do without them to start with, either make sure we're not willing to do without them just because we've had a little windfall. So I think we need to look at this very closely. And I would hope, Mr. Bonds, you and the city staff will take a really close, hard look at this. You've heard some of our concerns, and get with us with y'all's best option. And also, obviously, we can't do anything that was on the list, even if we wanted to, and we wouldn't even consider that. But if we did decide to do something, give us you all's priority on what you think is most important. And you're also looking at what your outlook will be for next year's budget as well. That's what I would ask you to do. Any other discussion, council?
Yeah, Mayor, let me add to that. I certainly concur with you and Mr. Wright. We certainly don't have to use all of this, this $864,000. There's got to be some middle ground. My only concern, I just didn't want to fall so far behind with some of these items. The bond rating agencies retained our AA bond rating. They were comfortable with our liquidity and comfortable with our budgetary process. So like you, I'd like staff to come back to us with their priorities so we can make an informed decision on where we want to go when we adopt the budget.
I think that's, I think we all are going to agree on that, on that course of action, council. Unless there's any discussion, we'll move on. Okay, we'll go to budget item B. Discuss the proposed, I'm sorry.
Yes, the fee ordinance is next.
Discuss the proposed 2021 fee resolution. Mr. Bonds?
Resolution, yes. Well, thank you. It's a very short set of fee changes. I'd just like to highlight some changes. Municipal court, first of all, has removed the two small fees, the $3 security fee, the $4 technology fee. Due to state law, both these fees are now collected under the state law rather than the local ordinance. We're removing it from our ordinance or our resolution. Planning and zoning has changed. The plat recording fees, we charged a flat rate regardless of what the counties were charging. But now we're just going to add the wording that we're just going to just straight pass through the charges. The charges that we received from the county, that's why we're going to charge people to do plat recording. Building inspection, there are several of the fees that are going to change. We had some legislation that came through and said that we couldn't use a sliding scale based on valuation. So we're going to do some simplified fee structures, flat-rate fee structures, based on like square footage of residences and things of that nature, rather than the sliding scales based on valuation. So this is going to be a good trade-off. For utilities, simply changing some tap fees based on reimbursed costs. We're just trying to get reimbursed for what it really cost us to make these taps, just trying to break even. I would like to point out, once again, we're not proposing a water wastewater rate change. However, we've talked about the debt coverage ratio, which is the net operating income divided by the debt service. That debt coverage is shown in the chart on the right there, and you can see that it's been as high as 256. And in the lowest, the past seven or eight years here, we're showing as 137 projected for FY '21. So we certainly don't need to get any lower than that and endanger ourselves to get to the minimum 125.
Yeah, Mayor, I asked Keith to put this exhibit in just to show that we made a covenant with our bondholders that our net revenues would at least be 125% of that year's bond payments. If we violate that in any given year, we have to file what's known as a material event notice with the municipal securities rulemaking board, and it's technically a default. So that's not a good thing. So I just want to caution us that when we start looking at the fiscal '22 budget a year from now, we're more than likely going to have to be faced with some sort of water and sewer rate increase to keep above our debt coverage ratio. So sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Okay. Well, then, the last couple of slides here, these are the last two meetings we've had. And then the next meeting, we're actually, next Thursday is August 13. We'll have a public hearing on the budget, public hearing on the tax rate. We're going to actually adopt the budget, adopt fee changes, and have a separate vote to ratify the rate. So the following Thursday, August 20, last meeting in August, we will adopt the tax rate and then adopt LEED Co.'s budget. So that's all I've got to say.
Any other question, Mr. Bonds, on these items? Sure. Good. Thank you, sir. Well, now move to action item A. Consider resolution of awarding contract amount of $3.9 million to Riley Harris' instruction of Tyler for the construction of number one fire station, five renovation in addition. Mr. Mcfee?
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Mr. Bonds, a little bit of background on fire station number five. Fire station number five, for those of you that aren't aware, for the public watching this, the fire station number five is located on the west portion of west central Longview. It's right inside, off of Pine Tree Road and Inside Loop 281. In the comprehensive plan, the renovation of fire station five, seven, and eight were listed as the number five priorities. And subsequently, they were included in the 2018 bond election. The scope was basically to renovate and expand the existing fire station facility and to add additional facilities to include future personnel capacity, constructing three new bays that were capable of holding the proper equipment needed in the future. And as you can see from this exhibit, this is the new addition, and the existing, new addition is in white, and the existing building is in gray. We opened nine bids on July 14th. The bids were extremely close. We had a great set of plans. And we recommend award in the amount of $3.97 million to Riley Harris. The rendering that you see on the screen in front of you is the north face of fire station five. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any question, Mr. Mcfee?
Roland, what was the construction budget for five?
So our last construction estimate was $4.371 million. The low bid with the alternates was $4.235 million. But during our review of the bids, we felt that one of the deductive, one of the deductive alternates, the improvement, it was deducting, the price of that improvement was so exorbitant, we actually accepted that deductive alternate and are lowering the bid award to $3.97. So really, the overall project's about 12% below budget.
Great. All right. Thank you.
And Mr. Mcfee, just because I've had this brought up, we had no local contractors within 5% of that bid. Is that correct?
That is correct. Okay. We actually, the purchasing policy allows for the 5% variation for $3,000 to $50,000. And the way in which we actually solicited bids for this, we were obligated to award the project to the low bidder.
Got you. Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other question, Mr. Mcfee? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I will conduct a roll call vote. Please say yes or no. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Snoddy?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Ishihara? Ms. Ishihara?
Kristen is on, but it looks like she may have lost audio for a moment.
Okay. I will come back. Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Pertle?
Yes.
And I vote, Mayor, vote yes as well. Ms. Ishihara, are you back with us?
It doesn't look like she's still on right now. It's just a technical difficulty.
Okay. Let's see. Well, I know she's in the meeting, so I want to get her vote on this. Maybe her audio is messed up. Mr. Finley?
If we can't get her back on, we'll just have to show it as that she just abstained. We have to have her vote.
Can she catch the vote?
No, it has to be through the means that we're using, the phone.
Okay. Well, then, unless we give her just a few more seconds. Well, we have, yes?
It does look like she might be offline now. She might have had a technical issue, so.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move forward because we have more than enough votes to carry the action item. So Ms. Secretary, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes, I will. Ed Moore made the motion, seconded by Steve Pertle. There was one that abstained. That was Kristen Ishihara, so the motion passes six to zero.
Thank you so much. We're now go to action item B. Consider resolution proposing a tax rate for 2020 and discussing a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. What's going?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor. State statute requires a preliminary vote on the proposed tax rate and the scheduling of a public hearing. The proposed tax rate is 39.97 cents for operations and maintenance, 15.92 cents for debt service, totaling 55.89 cents, which is the same total rate as the current year's rate. The public hearing has been set for Thursday, August 13th at 5:30. And due to the current health pandemic, two options will be available for public comment. State law requires a physical location, which will be at 300 West Cotton in the City Hall chambers. We will also provide a way for public comment by our video conferencing tool. Instructions on how to pay by this method can be found online at longviewtexas.gov. And I can answer any questions. And I can answer any questions you might have at this time.
Any question, Ms. Cohen? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, approve.
Second. Second, first and second. We'll now have a roll call vote. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Snotty.
Yes.
Mr. Wade. Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishihara, are you back with us?
I am, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Pertle.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Ms. Secretary, would you please confirm the record of the vote?
Yes, motion was made by Steve Pertle, seconded by Dave Wright. Resolution passes, carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. All right, council, we're now to our COVID-19 update. Since last we met, we continue to see more positive cases in Longview and throughout the state, including passing more than 1,000 confirmed cases and 18 deaths in Longview since this virus began. We're not out of the woods yet and I strongly encourage everyone to continue to be vigilant, wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands, follow guidelines available at opentexas.gov because this virus is still amongst us. There are a lot of things that are going on that will, that could possibly explain the uptake in the number of positives we've had. We're at, you know, 1,049 positives as of five o'clock today and continue to rise, but not as much as they did two weeks ago. Our numbers are coming down from, from what they were a couple of weeks ago. That could be from people wearing masks, it could be from social distance, it could be from the heat. There's no telling what it's from, but I'm just glad it's coming down. But we still continue to see a rise in the numbers each day and there's no telling when this is going to end, but we have to continue to do what we, well, the only thing we know to do, and that is to follow guidelines that are presented to us, like it's washing your hands, social distance and wearing a mask. I think our community has done very well with the mandate issued by the governor to wear masks. I appreciate the businesses that are enforcing this and the way we're enforcing it with education and trying to encourage people to follow the rules and they're doing a very good job. You know, we will, we will issue citations if necessary. That has not been necessary to my knowledge and people are doing well. So I hope we continue that. But unfortunately, we still continue to see deaths from this virus because it is a real virus. Hope that those deaths continue to be slow and, and far between. But until that happens, until this virus is away from us, we need to continue to do what we can do. And, you know, it's, it's been a long summer and people want to be on vacations, people will be doing things, kids want to be back doing their activities and we all want to be back in the council chambers amongst each other, but it's just not possible right now. So we need to keep being vigilant and doing what we're doing and we'll get through this all together. So I appreciate all of you all, council members and staff for being here today. I appreciate your time and your effort. I thank you for the work that's being done on this budget. It's very encouraging to see us be able to bring a budget to the community without having to have any kind of a tax increase for the, the services that we provide, especially with the downturn in our sales tax revenues. It's a testament to how the, the departments are doing, they're budgeting and I appreciate that very much, how the taxpayers will appreciate it as well. So unless, unless there's anything else, then we will adjourn this meeting until next time.